Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order for December 2nd. Would you call a roll? Let's see, yeah, call a roll.
Board member Kazer.
President.
Board member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board member Nanki.
Here.
Board member Leung, absent. Board member Osik.
Here.
Board member Hoy.
Here.
Board member Nordike.
Here.
Board member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. No one has signed up for public comment. Would anyone like to address the City's Urban Renewal Agency? Alrighty, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All items have been pulled from the consent calendar, so there is not one.
Want to grab the minutes? Do we have the minutes?
No, there are none listed.
We're good. Okay. Then we will move to special orders of business. We don't have any public hearings. First one pulled was 3.3A by Councilor Anderson.
I move the staff report.
Second.
Second by Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff report as a procedural matter. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on it when it comes to that. And I called Director Rutherford today, and she called me, actually, and we had a discussion of the purpose for the amendment to modify the boundary of the Fairview Urban Renewal Area. And I asked her if she could speak to the various issues, and then I suspect I may have some questions other than the questions we discussed this afternoon.
There we go. So, good evening, Kristen Rutherford. I'm the City's Urban Development Director. So, the first thing that I want to mention is tonight's action would not be to approve the substantial amendment. It would be to approve the initiation of the substantial amendment. This would allow us to move forward in conversations with the other taxing districts, move it forward to the Planning Commission after we've completed all our work, then bring it back to the Urban Renewal Agency for approval, which would be early next year or into next year's spring. So, the Fairview Urban Renewal Area is an area where we have stopped collecting our tax increment. We stopped collecting it a number of years ago. We have not closed the urban renewal area down yet, though, because we still have about $2.2 million of cash on hand. So, we have held off on determining the best way to spend those funds pending wrapping up an airport business plan to identify whether or not there are needs on the airport. There are. We have a draft, almost ready to distribute to everybody, version of the airport business plan. It will probably be going out a little bit later this week to City Council. So, what we're proposing to do in the substantial amendment is to release a significant amount of the acreage, which will free up capacity to establish or look at establishing urban renewal areas in other parts of the community, and then bring in some portions of the airport. So, this would allow us to use the $2.2 million cash on hand to meet some airport needs. Those needs, as identified in the business plan and through some other work we've done on the airport, consist of terminal facility needs. We had a facility assessment of the terminal building and office building done earlier this year. That assessment identified $850,000 in repairs. Now, we can't use urban renewal directly to do repairs or maintenance, but what this would allow us to do is to explore different options, such as a public-private partnership, to perhaps build some new office space on one end or the other of the airport, and then demolish the area that needs repairs. And so, if we were to use some of these funds to either build office space or to incentivize a public-private partnership, that could provide us some with additional leasehold revenue and house airport staff and address the maintenance concern. So, that's one option that we're exploring. Another option that we are exploring is there is a 10-acre parcel that is on the east side of the airport that is lacking taxiway connections. So, this is the area on the airport that is probably the most developable site and would generate leasehold revenue. If this 10-acre site were fully leased, it would generate about $140,000 a year in airport revenue, but it needs that taxiway connection. So, you know, the businesses that have shown interest in that site would be airport uses that would have fly-in, fly-out traffic, but is not commercial service. This amendment would not, the intent is not to facilitate the commercial service. So, it's more to facilitate development and job creation elsewhere. And then the third option, that is a potential opportunity that we have not done any greater amount of due diligence on until we know whether or not the amendment moves forward, we haven't spent that additional staff time, is on the south end of the airport, there is some acreage that is kind of outside of the fence, not on the airport proper, that could be developed for industrial flex use rather than airport use. So, this amendment would be bringing in these three different areas of the terminal to allow funds to be used on any of those projects. I see Councilor Anderson looking like he has a question, so I'll stop there right now.
One or two.
Yes.
And when a lawyer says just a few questions, that's usually trouble. Mr. Mayor, if I may, the first thing I look at this, looking at the boundary amendment, it looks to me like the current Fairview URA property will go away. I mean, it's going to be removed.
The majority of it will. We'll be keeping a small portion of it.
If the current FRA, URA is removed, it looks like the three gray areas will be totally new areas?
We're keeping a chunk of the existing URA.
Can you describe chunk, please?
So, the area on your map that, where you have the riding Fairview Industrial Drive.
Okay. So, the southeast.
The southeast.
So, that's already in it?
Yes.
So, you could spend the urban renewal funds that you have left over that are dedicated to Fairview in that spot right now for the flex industrial stuff, because that's part of, part of the URA?
We could, but that piece is not the existing airport land.
I understand that.
Correct.
That's my question.
Yes, it wouldn't result in revenue generation for the airport.
Yes, I understand that. That was.
Yes, we could spend that anywhere within the currently, current boundary.
Okay. Then, you indicate that doing this improvement will generate more than $1 million in new lease revenue. Over how long?
On the 10-acre property, it would be about $130,000, $140,000 a year.
So, be about a seven-year recovery?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I'm looking at the area that you're interested in, sort of the urban renewal gerrymandering to get to areas that are not, right now, contiguous to the urban renewal. And I noticed that there are properties to the northwest and two properties to the southwest. They developed without any urban renewal funding, didn't they?
So, you are to, are you looking to the, so you said to the northwest and the southwest of, on the airport or off the airport?
To the northwest and southeast on Turner Road. I'm looking at the Turner Road.
Yes. So, one of those parcels is the National Guard.
Okay.
And the other is the Garmin property.
And it looks like there's three separate properties. Is the one at the furthest southeast?
For the south?
Yeah.
Yes, that's also on the airport, yes.
So, setting aside the National Guard, we've got two that developed without any urban renewal funds.
Correct.
And does the National Guard use the airport? Are they tied into the airport?
Yes, they are.
And does Garmin use the airport to come, to supply their needs?
They do.
And they don't have a special runway going to them, do they?
They do have a connection, yes.
Okay. It doesn't, is it like a plane can go right up to Garmin?
Yes, so they can, they can taxi.
Okay. Then, so the taxiway connection would just be for the vacant 10-acre site?
Yes.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, that this is, just to initiate this project, and, you know, I am a process person, and so I can see that, but I will tell you right now that when it comes time to vote for this, unless things change, I will not be voting for it. But I understand that you need to get to process until you make us a final recommendation. I'm extremely interested in the contiguous area that's already in there, because I think that's the more appropriate use of urban renewal funds than I do expanding the gerrymander to the other end. And I will say that I have voted for that in the past, but when I voted for that on the Portland Road Urban Renewal Area, which escapes me the name of it now, that was because that gerrymandering is allowing us to provide the equivalent of SRO housing, which to me is a different purpose, a broader public purpose than support of one particular industry, as opposed to supporting a general pursuit of industry, which we would on the far southeast portion. So, I'm going to vote for this, but I don't think I'll be voting for it when it comes back with the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. I think the other thing you'll have is the airport business plan, to kind of take a look at how it all fits together.
I understand that, and I don't know how I feel about the airport business plan either, and I've discussed this in the past, specifically including commercial air flights out of here.
Well, it'll be interesting to see the plan before we decide, won't it? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And kind of in that vein, we've been looking to see what to do with that last $2.2 million for a long time. We put it in the, kind of the rollover, small business loans grant program. But we've always, we've talked about potentially changing the way airway actually goes around, possibly pulling in some more land to the airport. In this case, it sounds like we'll be using, potentially for both airport and non-airport uses, which again is, in my opinion, the right path to take with urban renewal area The, if we buy, right now, I'll step back. Right now, we don't own any structures besides our own on the airport, correct?
That's correct.
So, we own the land, and everybody leases, builds on top, and then we make them tear them down if they get bad after a certain amount of time. This one is kind of different in the respect that it's looking at us actually building leasable hangar space and then renting that out to actually help the P&L for the airport itself, correct?
That's one of the options that we're looking at. We're looking at two potential options. One would be the building either on our own or through a public-private partnership office space adjacent to the terminal that we would lease out, in addition to occupying part of it. And then the other option we are exploring is at that south end that would either be industrial flex space, hangar space, something along those lines that we would own and lease out as a revenue generator. Because it is, I think everybody is aware that we have, we have assurances to the FAA for the grant funding that we receive. So, we have 20-year obligations every time we accept a new grant. We have a 20-year commitment to operate the airport and maintain the airport. So, we are looking at a variety of options to increase our revenue so that we are not dependent on the general fund.
Cool. And then, just a couple more. We could have left the entirety of the current urban renewal area and just added a piece on to it in the airport, correct?
Correct.
But we have no viable project potentials in that old space, and so we're essentially reducing it by 259 acres and freeing that up, because we have a limited percentage of city property that can be in urban renewal, which is, I think, 15%.
That's right.
And we are, what, right now?
We're at a little over 13%. We're just over 3,000 acres in the city. We have completed all of the projects in the primary plan a number of years ago, and we've had that $2.2 million on hand, because we've had a loan project where we've granted a few loans, but as a whole, the Fairview Urban Renewal Area is built out.
Correct. And if this were to take place, how long until we could retire the urban renewal area in total?
I would say this is probably a three- to four-year window, depending on which projects we pursue in the timeline for developing and building those projects.
Cool. And one last little piece.
Sure.
We're cherry-stemming around all these different properties. Is there a minimum width that we have to actually use to interconnect those, or what actually is the potential width?
Legally, there is not a minimum width. It really comes down to what the surveyors can best describe legally, and as I've seen in other locations, it tends to be, they'll follow basically a roadway section, you know, so maybe 50 feet, 60 feet.
Which is why we're following the railroad tracks, because it's very well documented exactly where they are. Nice. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Councilor Kazer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the agency board not authorize an exception to the capital improvement grant program guidelines to allow reimbursement work for work completed prior to grant commitment for property at 220 Liberty Street Northeast.
Second. Hoy.
And I'd really like to hear from Director Rutherford about this project. Her and I spoke earlier today, but if you could share with the council the, kind of the history of this project, especially the communications and Mr. Rutherford's previous experience with this grant program, that'd be helpful.
Yes, happy to. So, the grant that we're speaking about tonight and potentially another grant, similar circumstances that would possibly come back in January. So, this particular grant is for the former beanery site, which has received grant funding in the past. So, this property was vacated within the last year. Construction improvements began late spring to attract a new tenant. Staff reached out to ownership to make sure that they were aware of the grant program and what the process was. I, there appears to have been a misunderstanding about what the process was at that time, because our typical process is that you have to apply for the grant and receive an approval of your project and a commitment letter before you start work on the project. In this case, that didn't happen. There were a couple of conversations, but an application was not received. And upon project completion, then we were approached with a request for grant funding. So, we don't have a path at the staff level, because this is a policy, to approve a grant retroactively like this. So, the path to move forward with a potential approval would be to bring it forward, as we're doing tonight, as an exception. So, we had a similar occurrence happen, kind of in the same timeframe, with the COW, which is the co-working space here in Salem, where they also had discussions with staff about the process, proceeded with work, and then came in subsequently to make a grant request. Now, we've also had this circumstance happen, oh, about two years ago in the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area, and in that situation, the request was denied. It was not brought forward at that time as an exception. In the four years that I've been in this position, I think this may be the third time that we have had this kind of situation arise.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern with this is if we approve this, then do we open ourselves up to other projects that, retroactive approval, that could come out of the woodwork, and then we wouldn't have any way of knowing we're there, or being able to budget, or plan, or anything like that? My second concern is if we have a process, but we don't require people to follow it, then what's the point? So, those might be rhetorical.
Okay.
Ms. Rutherford, I have a question on it. Have you had a chance to review the request in terms of what is being requested for reimbursement?
Yes, so the application was submitted. It has been reviewed. The project elements had, had from, had the process been followed and application submitted before the work, it would have been eligible for reimbursement. So, we're not asking for a waiver of that criteria.
Right. So, other than a process problem, which we have waived on all kinds, I've watched them waived on cultural and tourism, TOT funds for all kinds of programs, on a variety where people are, either get confused by the system or misunderstand the system, but this would be just purely, they didn't fill out a form at a certain date and get a pre-approval, but you've had a chance to review it, and this fits exactly what we want done with this grant money.
That's correct. The work does meet the criteria.
And what we're using the money for, it's urban renewal money, is to improve properties to meet a certain criteria in the downtown area, and that's what the money's invested for. That's exactly what would be happening here, albeit if the application had been done on time, and why that didn't happen, I think, is certainly problematic, but this is exactly what we're funding this grant program for. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Councilor Lewis.
Just want to make sure I understand, the folks that were doing this work came and had conversations with the city about the grant program?
Staff reached out to them. Staff approached them, is my understanding.
And was there a voiced interest in the grant program by the developer?
Yes, that's my understanding. They were interested in the funding.
Okay, because I've been here before.
Yes.
Why didn't the staff reach out again and again until you got an answer?
Staff reached out more than once, and they reached out when they saw construction beginning and underway. So, there was more than one contact, as I understand it, from staff to those that were doing the work. Why the application wasn't filled out prior to the start of construction, I can't speak to that. It could be that there was a misunderstanding about the process.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I clarify something you said earlier? I think I heard you say that this particular property had been subject to this grant program in the past. Was it the same owner?
Yes.
So, the owner's familiar with the process and familiar with the rules and successfully navigated it the first time?
I would assume so. I was not with the city at that time, but there was a grant made to that owner, that property, previously.
Thank you. Do we have a history of properties receiving more than one grant?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be nice if those who were applying for the grant would be here to actually beat to their portion.
They are here. You want to hear from them?
It would be nice to figure out where the conversation fell apart. That being said, if we have a process and you have to have approval before you buy something, in my line of work, safe requires that as well. If you want to buy something to help bring somebody back into work, you have to be authorized beforehand before you buy it.
Right.
And there's no exception to that. And I don't think we should have any exceptions to that either, or it gets back to where Councilor Hoy was going. Then, oh geez, well, we did this last year, I'm going to try to get some extra money now, because it's a dangerous place to go.
Okay.
Especially if we were clear in that, and that's where, I don't have a lot of knowledge as to where the misunderstanding was, but it sounds like we had reached out. Otherwise, if we wouldn't have reached out at all, there would have been no knowledge even necessarily for this grant to have come into play. And I'm assuming that we had mentioned that you have to have the application approved, and maybe it was construction schedule or whatever, but it looks like they didn't take advantage of that until after it was all done, which is too late.
I don't know. Do you, do you want to come up and?
Mike Bowers, 140834th Avenue Northwest, Salem. May I hand this out to the council or to the group?
Certainly.
While that's going around, one of the issues we ran into is that the building was built with a setback making a porch for a kind of a French sidewalk café approach. The problem was it became a magnet for homeless overnight. We were, I was down there every single day once the beanery stopped operations and cleaning up.
This is the old beanery you're talking about?
The old beanery.
Yeah.
Yeah, 220 Liberty. I was cleaning up cardboard, human waste, lots of litter every day.
Okay.
And so, we decided it was time to deal with that. I didn't have a tenant yet, and so I approached the urban renewal about doing that, and they gave me some grant papers to look at. The only thing on that grant paper that says anything about pre-approval is, I circled it on there where it says "some conditions may apply." So, how that means ahead of time, I don't know. The other comment about being reached out, we were not reached out to. I went in once, and that's the only time we heard from them. We've added a lot to that building. We've created 11 jobs downtown. We've increased the upstairs by turning, them turning it into a training school with state grant funding. They have 17 students a year that go through there, and, you know, I think we've done a good job with that. Had I known that this was required, then maybe we would have, we were on a real short time, time thing that we have a historic building. It would, it took a month to get that taken care of. We had to get building permits. That took another couple of weeks. And so, we were six weeks behind the ball just to get it going for our tenant to have it by September.
Did you have a project manager?
We had a project manager. We used.
Did your project manager talk to urban, to the urban renewal folks?
Not that I'm aware of. He hadn't said it to me.
Okay. Have you talked to the project manager about whether they were contacted?
No, I haven't.
Okay. He might be an interesting person to visit with.
Yeah. We had an architect, and Ron Ped said nothing to us about it. He did all of the permit work for us.
Any questions? Councilor Kazer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. I just want to make sure I really understand what you're saying. You're saying that you or any folks on your project had absolutely no contact with staff about this?
I went in, I think it was April or May, as soon as we found out we were losing our tenant. And I inquired about the grants. The paper you see there is one of the papers that they gave us. The other one was just a form to fill out. Nowhere on any of those did it say must be pre-approved. The interesting thing was in October, when we got the job done and we had an accurate budget, the forms changed, and now they say on it that pre-approval is required. So, I, you know, it's hard to run a, try to run a construction thing without adequate information.
Can I ask, too, what exactly is your role in this project?
I married the wrong woman. I'm a son-in-law, and we're, I was in charge of paying all the bills and.
So, you're not the project manager?
No.
Who was the project manager?
It was Tim Olson was his name. He's a construction person.
And to, and what you just were describing to the mayor is that you have not talked with him about whether or not he has talked with staff about this?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And then.
And he's not mentioned it to me either, so.
And then to Director Rutherford, you said staff had multiple contacts with him. Do we have emails or records of that happening?
They were all phone conversations. They were all phone conversations. And during the time period when this was going through historic review and we received notices, at that point, there was contact initiated to make sure that they were aware of the process prior to starting construction.
Thank you. And I have one further question. Mr. Bowers, were, were you or Mr. Olson involved in the previous grant from 2011 for this property?
No. It was owned in a partnership back in 2011. And after that, the buildings were split up of the partnership and Dirt Floor Properties own the building now.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to, did you want to talk? Gene, did you want to?
My name is Gene Durfler. My address is 1955 Dallas Highway, and I am the owner of the property. I'm almost 96. And in the process of my getting older, I decided to turn some of the decisions to be made over to my son-in-law so that he could manage some of the property. I was not involved in the process that he went through. I would obviously tell you without, I think all of you would agree, had we known or had he known that it was necessary to have approval before we started any work, certainly the work were not ever started, we would have lost a tenant. But regardless of that, it would make common sense, had, had we been aware of that, we would not have moved ahead with the project. So it was an error on our part, but I think that what Mike said, that we did make one contact with the agency. Beyond that, there was no contact made, or I didn't hear anything about it until we found out that we had to have approval before that project was started. So I grant you that was an error on our part, but certainly we had expected in our calculations to have this money available to us so that we could complete the project. And as Mike said, we've added jobs to the city. We, it all started really, we had the tenant, the beanery was there for 15 years. Because of the homeless problem, they closed it up. They couldn't, couldn't put up with the problems that they created. So we had to end that tenancy. And we had this client available, and so that's kind of the direction that we took to, yeah, done.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Senator Durfler? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The motion is to deny the, what's it called, a variance? Exception, sorry. These bureaucratic terms just throw you. I am sympathetic to the confusion. Okay? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No.
No.
Okay. Bennett, Lewis are negatives. Motion passes. And I don't see anything else on the agenda for- Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for no December 2nd order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Casey? Counselor Anderson? Counselor Nanki? Counselor Leong absent. Counselor Osick? Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay, additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Leong is unable to attend tonight's meeting because of sick children at home. She has requested participating in the council meeting by telephone. Per council rule 23, a counselor must provide 24 hours' notice to the city manager of her desire to attend the meeting by telephone. 24 hours' notice was not provided, was not able to be provided. City council may suspend its rules by a two-thirds vote of the counselors present. I move suspension of council rule 23 for tonight's city council meeting.
Second, Anderson? Anderson?
Yes.
Yeah. Just a question, is this for one piece of, of action or are we going to include her for the whole meeting? Do you know?
I'm going to defer to the city manager.
Okay.
Thank you. In my discussions with the counselor, she requested participation during council's consideration of 7.2, the second reading of the sidewalk and public property ordinance.
Okay. Do you want to limit your motion to that participation or do you want her, are we to dial her up now and have-
I think we- If I'm, I'm sorry. I think because of the reason she's at home, her ability to participate is, is limited even by phone, and she did request that she be called when council is at 7.2.
Okay. Is that, is that your motion then?
Yes.
Okay, this is suspension of the rules to allow, essentially to allow Counselor Leong to vote on 7.2A when that comes up. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, just because we're talking about rules tonight, when did the request come in?
We received a phone call at 4:00 PM today.
And the rule is 24 hours?
Correct.
This will take a two-thirds vote of those present, okay? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, we have two-thirds. Motion passes. Okay, we will take a brief break just for the second readings and dial her up and get her on, okay? Great. Counselor comments? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An interesting one, because we received an email talking about a plastic bag ban. And it is not without issues out in the public as well. I was at my favorite local shopping location and the cashier, because of the shift, his productivity dropped massively from 20 items per minute down to 11, because they're dealing with other people's bags. And then, my next visit, the cashier told me that the city gets the five cents. And that's what she'd been passing on to all their customers as well. And so I corrected her in that respect.
Oh, good.
But even with, with five cents per bag, if their productivity is being restricted, that it'd be interesting to see if they're still a little gung-ho for what happened. So just figured I'd share that since we got that email yesterday.
Well, as you can tell by what we're voting on tonight, it's sort of moot at this point.
It is.
Okay.
But it is not without consequence.
Good point. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Just in brief response to Counselor Nanki's, as the proponent of the original motion, every time I'm shopping every place, I ask the person ahead of me and behind me what they feel about this ban. And I, then I also ask the cashier, and I would say that 90% of people say, "This is great. I like it." Maybe 5%, "I'm a little confused by it. I don't know what it does." And maybe 2% to 3% are pretty sure that the council was interfering with their First Amendment freedom right to buy plastic bags. So, you know, we'll have maybe a further discussion at, at the time of the ordinance, because I do have some questions about 7-1, but I can wait till then.
Okay.
Well, I do have some additional comments though.
Save my retort for then.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. I'm looking forward to it, Counselor Nanki. On, on Friday night, I attended the, and served at the warming center at First Presbyterian Church downtown from a little after 10 to nearly 4 o'clock in the morning. I understand that Counselor Hoy did the same thing on Thanksgiving. And I will tell you that this is something that I urge everybody on the council to go down and do, to see what it's like. And I also, I'll be going back again. I also urge the people who are here in this room and the people who are watching on CCTV, especially people who are concerned about the homeless situation we have, to volunteer. There are some nights when they could be open under the rules, which I think is 32 degrees or below, but if they don't have sufficient volunteers signed up, they are not able to open. So this is a crucial need for everybody in the city to participate in. I will tell you that the night I was there, we had 88 people served. The limit is 78, but if somebody signs out, we can bring somebody in. And I would say we referred, sent over by taxi about close to a dozen people to the Capitol Wesleyan Church over there on 19th and Mill, I believe, which is a new church that's come on board. And I want to thank all the, excuse me, churches and other organizations that have done that. As a segue to that, and that relates to the second reading tonight, just in advance of the council voting on 7B, I'm going to be moving to postpone it for one week, the decision one week. And if that motion passes, I will also move to suspend the rules and make a motion for a staff report to report on all vacant, unused city property that may be usable for, as a place for the displaced campers. And I just want to let the council know that, and also the people who are here to testify that, at least that is my proposal. And if the motion is not, to postpone is not granted, I will be putting on the agenda the same motion for next week's meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Your city manager? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I hadn't intended to talk about it publicly, but yes, I did volunteer on Thanksgiving night, and I definitely echo Counselor Anderson's comments and encourage others to do the same. It was a, it was a good experience. It's something that we should all do when we can. I'll be back in, at 5:00 in the morning, so if counselors could keep their comments short tonight, that would be appreciated, so I can get some sleep.
Very good. Any further comments? All righty? Oh, Counselor Lewis, sorry.
Yeah, I hesitated, but you know what? I too go shopping, and I shop at Ross and West Salem, and the comments that I'm getting from those folks seem to be diametrically opposed to Mr. Anderson. I'm not sure where he shops. But the folks, the folks that shop at Ross do recognize and are especially upset now because the ban that this city spent so much time, so much money, so much effort passing is now moot, because the state has taken over. So that's what folks at Ross and West Salem are talking about.
Okay, any further comments? I have a proclamation. Whereas December 7, 1941 marks a somber day in United States history, and whereas we remember the more than 2,400 Americans who lost their lives on that day, including 1,102 sailors permanently entombed in the USS Arizona. And whereas in a speech the following day to a joint session of Congress, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt declared December 7, 1941, as a date that will live in infamy. And whereas the events of that tragic day in the Hawaiian island of Oahu at Pearl Harbor propelled America into World War II and gave the nation a resolve that sustained the nation to victory. And whereas, because of that victory for democracy and the sacrifices and suffering endured to secure it, the United States has come to know our enemies of then as allies today. And now therefore I, Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim December 7, 2019, as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day and encourage the community to reflect on the historic events that occurred 78 years ago and pay tribute to those whose lives were lost, dated this second day of December 2019. All right, we have a presentation this evening. Ms. Valies, do you want to introduce your guests this evening?
I can, but she was, she's going to introduce the team.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us here today. I'm Maria Pope, the President and Chief Executive Officer of Portland General Electric. And with me today is Wendy Valies, who you just mentioned, who's responsible for our government affairs for this region. And then also Bill Messner, who is our Director of Safety, Resiliency, and Security at the company. We look forward to being able to speak with you today, and I'm going to move pretty quickly through my remarks so we can get on with the resiliency section. Is that okay, Mayor?
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for having us here. Let's remove this. Oops. Make your pardon? There we go. First of all, just a little bit, I think all of you are familiar with our company. We provide your community, your 170,000 citizens with electricity. And we take great pride in working with Ryan Zinc as we create 100% renewable product for all of you. Today, our product is 40% renewable. Next year, it will be 50%. And then with your acquisition to the city of additional 100% renewable energy, you will be at 100% green energy for Salem. So it's quite an accomplishment you all should be pleased with. We also are very pleased with the Electric Avenue partnership for the Electric Avenue on, on Court Street. And we have spent a lot of time with you on the Renewable Development Funds, which we contributed $3 million to the Willow Lake cogeneration facility. And as many of you think of us, we also pay a lot of franchise fees, taxes, and we are number one revenue supplier at about a little bit over $7 million annually to the city. We spend a lot of time making sure that our product is affordable, safe, and reliable. And it's really important to us that as we move into the future, that we not, we take care of our environment, that we make sure that we provide a product that is also used for transportation fuels and others, and that we really are here for you when times are tough. We're used to storms in the Pacific Northwest, but increasingly, we're seeing types of natural disasters and preparing for things like earthquakes. We've seen fires in California, and that's really what we'd like to spend our time talking with you about today. So as we take a look at the grid infrastructure, we invest continually to make sure that it's, again, safe, reliable, resilient, and secure. We work with your first responders to make sure that in disasters, that the dangerous product of electricity is handled safely by everyone. And that with the growing importance of electricity in our ever interconnected lives for our businesses, and especially for our elderly and those who are most vulnerable, that we make sure that we are able to repair the system and restore service as quickly as possible. And with that, let me turn things over to Bill Messner, who will spend some more time talking about that with you.
Thank you, Maria. As all of you know, we have emerging threats that we face on a daily basis, and I'll go through some of those slides here. But we have invested millions in improving our system and testing our system and our employees so we can respond to storms. And we have a very proud of that record as we respond to our communities. But with that said, the world is changing very quickly, as Maria stated, and global warming is, is one of those things that we must face and is challenging us as we prepare our grid to serve. And with that, we have extreme weather conditions, especially if you think the wildfires in Southern Ca- or California are neighbors to the South. And we have stood up a task team in the response to that and how we can prepare for wildfires and about investing in our system and managing vegetation around our wires. In addition to that, we are preparing for a Cascadia-level earthquake. We have to be prepared for that, so we are here for our customers. We also are improving our systems in terms of cybersecurity and physical security. We are under constant attack from people trying to get into our systems. And we are also from a cyber-type attack to, and we also, like I mentioned earlier about physical attacks, which includes terrorism. And then with that being said, we're also part of a regional grid. So we are part of 11, our grid is connected to 11 western states and parts of Canada. So we have to respond to those events that impact that grid as well. And how are we doing this? So we are preparing for emergencies and emergency planning and exercises. So we are part of what we call incident command system and part of what FEMA does. So we, that's our structure that we have for our own teams. And so we are testing, we have plans, we test those plans and retest those plans. And we work with local, federal, and state officials as we test those systems. And then in addition to that, we are improving our actual infrastructure. So we've invested several dollars, significant dollars, in improving our seismic conditions of our plants, think of our poles and our wires as well, so we can respond to systems or to earthquakes that, that can damage those systems. And in addition to that, we have, the next point up there is redundant systems. So think of, if we do have a, an earthquake, what, where can we stand up our employees till we can recover? And so we are, we have one building already, what we call the readiness center, so we can stand up and have our operations center there, our emergency operations center. And we're right now in the middle of constructing what we call the IOC or the Integrated Operations Center. Center, to, to be basically our main point for that. And so we will have all our critical tasks located in that building, and that building will be designed to survive a Cascadia event. And then recognizing that we have to have strategic partnerships in order for us to be successful to respond to our communities, and that includes cities such as yours, but we're also dealing with or have relationships with state and federal agencies as we prepare for these events, because we will need help impacting all of us. And then that, this leads to this last slide here that I wanted to leave you with, which is that we have, collaborative partnerships are very much key, and I had mentioned that it's, that is at a local, state, and federal level. And Wendy and Valies, as well as Matt McHill, are our key points for Salem, so what we want to do, as we leave here tonight, is that we want to continue that partnership and expand on that partnership and have good relationships with, with your emergency responders, so we can be prepared if that event does happen and we can protect your community. And that concludes my remarks.
Questions?
So at this point, we're willing to take questions.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More of a comment than a question. It was nice to see you again. We had discussions over in, banned at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and actually my questions revolved around resiliency and the security of the grid as well, knowing that other areas now we've seen significant power drops. And so if I knew that all I had to do is ask a question in a meeting out there and you guys would come down and talk about, no. But I'm chairing the mayor's resiliency task force as well, and thank you for, for coming in actually, sharing that.
Thank you, and it was, make no mistake, it was comments like yours and questions that have prompted us to want to come and speak with you all today, so that you're aware of the kinds of issues that we potentially could face, how we're preparing, and also be able to interact in a partnership fashion with, with all of the communities that we serve. So thank you for your comments.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down. This is a great presentation. I have a question that's a little bit off topic, but since you're here. I recently had a person contact me, I have solar panels on my roof, and he was interested in getting them as well, but he was told by PGE that his particular substation is at capacity for solar, so he wasn't able to do that, and I was just curious, is that kind of a one-off, or, or are there certain places that where we're just at capacity for, for solar?
Sure. So what we're facing with is a, a situation where we have a number of entrepreneurs and developers who want to build solar and then sell it into the grid, and in particular in this region, there are some areas that has been more popular and also more lucrative for those areas if they don't have to spend money to upgrade the system for the interconnection. And so we have, we have been challenged with people who, particularly in certain areas, want to interconnect into our systems, and that's taken them at capacity. So I don't know the particular substation, but we can take a look and, and exactly where the engineering calculations are. We have a very specific intake system to be able to provide as much visibility for developers as, as well as for others. This would probably not be the situation if it was just a single household or someone putting solar panels on their roof, so it's someone who's, who's in the development, in the solar development business.
Thank you.
I think I should mention that one of the principles of being a regulated utility is, is that we serve everyone, and we serve everyone in what we consider to be a non-discriminatory basis, but also we don't take costs that should be borne, let's say, by a developer, and spread those around to all other customers. So there's very much of sort of an equity way of looking at who bears the different costs, and, and that's well documented through the Oregon Public Utility Commission, and I could help you with where you can tell that developer they can look.
Just to clarify, this is just a single homeowner with one roof, not a developer?
Then let, let's follow up afterwards, because that, a substation would not have any indication for one, one person's household.
Thank you.
You're a really, really big house.
Are there any other, any other questions? Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming down.
Mayor, thank you so much, and thank you for having us today.
Thank you.
And councilors.
Okay. Go to public comment. Excuse me, I'll remind you, everyone has three minutes. When the yellow light goes on, you have one minute left. When the red light goes on, please stop talking, kind of keep your eye on the light. If you don't, I'll, I'll let you know you've hit the limit. And we don't have a huge number, so we'll just move on out. Suzanne Kaltwasser.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and members of the city council. My name is Suzanne Kaltwasser, and I live in Ward 8, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Salem Speaks Up for Human Rights. And I hope that you got in your packets a copy of the flyer, and this is our 27th annual Salem Speaks Up for Human Rights, and it is a celebration that always happens on December 10th each year, regardless of the day, because it is the 71st anniversary of the United Nations signing of the Declaration of Human Rights. And so on December 10th every year, we have an opportunity to recognize that event, but also to invite people from Salem to come and speak up about issues that concern them regarding human rights. And there's an open mic period. There's always a, a bit of a program. The mayor usually has a proclamation declaring it Human Rights Day on December 10th, but also this year, we're going to have a presentation panel on the Salem's Refugee Program, and invited several of the recent refugees to come share their experiences and so forth. And then there'll also be a, a brief recognition for Rose Lewis, who passed away this summer, who is a great human rights advocate in our Salem area. And anyway, then there'll be an opportunity for people to speak up, and we invite you to come and to listen to the people who speak, both in terms of successes that we have as a community, as well as concerns that we have as a community, and see if there are some issues there that inspire you to, and the other organizations, to do something about those things. The event is at St. Mark Lutheran Church, begins at 7:00 PM, runs about two hours, doors open at 6:30, and so I'm hoping that you will come and that the people that are listening in the audience will also come and speak up. I have some flyers that I'll leave over here, both in English and Spanish, so if there's any questions.
Great. Just a, just a comment, I've attended this for a number of years on behalf of previous mayors. I, I seem to be the guy that goes to this, and it is an excellent program. I really can't recommend it enough as an opportunity to hear. What I found interesting is there are a number of groups that tell kind of what they do, and then individual citizens with, with really compelling stories and information about what's going on in the community and, in areas we may or may not have heard about, but it, it gives you a chance to kind of talk with folks about the variety of issues. Our Human Rights Commission is a sponsor of this, along with a, a whole long list. Who else does sponsor this?
Well, the organizing group is, along with Gretchen Vanad of the Human Rights Commission, and their volunteers that will come and participate. We have the League of Women Voters of Marion Pope County, the United Nations Association here in Salem, and AAUW, but there's also 12 other city and statewide organizations that participate, such as Luce and Costa, Picune, and NAACP, Oregon Peace Works, and so on. So it's, it's well supported, and one of our goals is to not just have a one-day event, but rather see if people can take away ideas and maybe even approach people who've spoken to say, you know, how can I help? And then we have now a Facebook presence with about 500 members, and everybody should go, become a member of Salem Speaks Up, because that's where we share other groups that are like ours, events, and tell stories from the community of success and, and aspirations for how we can improve the community.
So one more time, December 10th.
December 10th, that's a Tuesday. Doors open at 6:30, and the program starts with music from Peter Bergel at 7:00, and then we have a program, and then the speak-up, and then we, it's free to anybody, you don't have to register, you just walk in, and there's refreshments.
There is, actually, the question is very good, and it's at St. Mark's Lutheran Church.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I am here to present the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Annual Report. I am the chair of that organization, at least for another month, and then after that, you'll have a new chair. I hope you all had a chance to at least look at this. This is a new format, and for us, I think it's much better, much more readable than it has been in the past. There are a few things I would like to, to highlight. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our staff person, Patricia Farrell, who's sitting over there. She's been wonderful and extremely helpful, and I'd like to acknowledge Woody Dukes, who's on our board, who came with me this evening, basically to hold my hand. So if you look at the report, if you've read it, you'll note that there are a number of recommendations for funding in here. Please take them seriously. We do need more funding, especially for maintenance and equipment, and to go ahead and develop new parks. I was in another meeting earlier today, and I heard both of the speakers there say that when they talk to people out in their areas, the first thing they talk about is, we want to develop parks. We want parks that are close to us. So please take those recommendations seriously. We really would like a new, another park ranger. That would be really helpful. So moving on, you'll see that we have done quite a lot in terms of trying to purchase more, more acreage, getting grants for various things, working on master plans for a whole bunch of different parks. There are, Battle Creek, as you all know, is in that process right now, and there's a couple of others that will come online in terms of master plans this coming year. So that should be kind of interesting. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about the tree plan. We've had a lot of discussion about trees this year. We've implemented a tree survey. We had an intern that worked this past summer who went out and counted and tabulated the different kinds of trees that we have in certain areas. We're going to be continuing that process, I think, as time goes by. We worked with Tree Ecology and Friends of Trees to plant trees in a variety of different parks, and McKay has, in particular, has been very successful. Councilor Hoy and I slogged through about 20 feet of mud to plant a few trees, as I recall. It was really wet. Anyway, it was great fun, though. In any event, we're participating in the community forestry strategic plan. All of these tree-related things are extremely important for a variety of reasons that you all know about, increasing the canopy, decreasing carbon dioxide, providing mental health benefits, and all of those sorts of things. We also need that we recommend that you continue funding for things like the restoration of natural areas, the, the monarch pollinator gardens, and the development of a management plan for Minto Brown Island. Those are just a couple of the things that were there, that were listed there. We have done a lot this year in terms of the good governance issues. So we have done things like provide an assessment of what would happen if you put the third bridge over Wallace Marine Park. You may remember that. That was a, something called a 4F decision. We have participated with various other advisory boards, including the Food and Sundry's Distribution Task Force, but also Salem Arts Commission, the Rotary people with regard to the stage kind of thing. So there's a lot of things that have been going on, but I'd also like to say that what's not in here is we had our first board retreat. We had our first tree hearing ever for the Division Street Trees. And there are a couple of things that are not yet done, one of them being the purchase and acquisition of the park at the North State Hospital grounds. I really wanted to see that done sometime before I left this position, kind of like the police chief who said he didn't want to retire before they actually built the facility. And so here I am. So that's not done yet. That's too bad. And we also do not have any kind of clear resolution, the scope and division of authority between SPRAB, the Historic Landmarks Commission, and others who might have an interest in trees or management of various parks. And I think that that's an issue which will continue to haunt us until we get it thoroughly resolved. And we do have a tree committee now that is working to look at those issues and to propose some additional rule changes and rewrites that might straighten out some of the conflicts that we've seen. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Great, great job. That was a really good report, Casia, plus just the tremendous work you all are doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm hoping I'm alive when we get that park up on D Street. It's, apparently the state is not going to accommodate either one of us as they continue to fiddle around with that property.
I recommend a sit-in. A camp-in.
Yeah.
There's your place.
It's, it's pretty amazing dealing with them, trying to get them to subdivide that property. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I concur with the mayor on this report. It was a very good format in conjunction with the six areas of emphasis that the city has. That's very helpful to us. I also want to thank you for your service on the park commission and for your prior service on the city council. So job well done in both. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to note, I believe that this report was written largely by Tony Whitler. Am I correct on that? Yes. So credit goes, goes to our other staff person, Tony Whitler, with a really good annual report. In the past, Tony and I have written this, but this one just sort of appeared, and I thought, that's great. One more thing I don't have to do. So, all right. Thank you all.
Any other questions, comments? Yes. Councilor Nordike.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Quillanen. I commend you for your service to our community as a former counselor and as chair of this board. And I'm just curious, is there any interest, you think, in having a youth member on this board, considering that many people in our city who use parks are kids and young families? I'm wondering if there's any interest in having a youth member on the board.
I don't know. We've never, that, ideas never come up before, but I can certainly ask our group next time we meet to, to think about it. That's about as best I can do right now, and then it'll be up to the new chair, you know, in January to carry that through. But we're always open for new ideas that would either improve the effectiveness of what we do or the efficiency of what we do, one or the other.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Becky Beeman. I live in Ward 7. Considering how most of us live, I don't think anyone here would argue with me when I say that people are safest and their health is most protected when they sleep inside buildings. If they have no buildings they can sleep in, they are safest and their health most protected when they sleep in tents. They are most at risk and their health least protected when they sleep without protection from the elements. I believe you heard from a doctor last week urging you to first do no harm as you consider this decision. I don't know if he's speaking this week, but I would put forth that if you decide to outlaw tents, you are doing harm to the citizens of Salem. These unhoused people are citizens of Salem. If Salem continues down the path we are on, we may eventually be able to kill our homeless by exposure and denial of basic necessities of life. But can we live with ourselves after this happens? But can we live with ourselves after this happens? In the past, the Territory and State of Oregon treated black people this way. The law said it didn't matter where blacks lived, it just better not be here. This approach allows us to deny these unwanted folks by just saying, "Not in my backyard." It would be far better for us to focus on where we want the homeless to be, rather than focusing exclusively on where we don't want them to be. I have a friend who worked intake for a nonprofit, and he would interview these people as they came in. And I asked him how he took this, and he said, "We are all of us," and I'm looking at you folks, "we are all of us, two bad decisions from homelessness. There's some information in the package, submitted testimony, that talks about this. This is not a long way from our reality. This is real, folks." I was in the military for 29 years, five months and 11 days. And that was plenty of time to hear about senseless, stubborn, hard-headed policies that may or may not have made sense to anyone, but we did them anyway. I see this as kind of headed down that way. And saying that it's okay, it's legal because it's a fine, it's not a crime, really disturbs me. Because we're fining people who have no money. They're on the streets because they have no money, and eventually, it'll be a crime for not paying. I think this is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Lori Walker? Followed by Daniel Rushee?
Good evening. I am in the Scann neighborhood of Ward 2. I am a facilitator of the Homeless Coalition of Salem. I'm also a legal guardian of someone who once was homeless and an advocate for many homeless folks. I would like to request that voting on the camping ordinance be delayed until an approved area for homeless campers can be found. I would like to request the city to ask for land to be donated for use for this purpose, a supervised, an area that could be supervised with volunteers or staff, area with hygiene facilities, dumpsters, restrooms. Many groups and organizations have sought city approval on this, including home-based shelters, which I'm involved with, and we've been denied. It is beyond time for this to be actively pursued. We have been turned down by the city, and now it's coming back to the city of, "What do we do?" And there's still plenty of people who would like to help fix this problem. The city and its citizens are well aware that the suggestions of the task force have been, not been realized, restrooms, storage pod, places for people to sleep, places to be inside on evenings and weekends. If people aren't allowed in tents, they will be in bushes or other areas, women, couples, children, pets. Many have asked about Hillcrest Buildings and other property in talks with staff. I have a friend who is a Native American from the Standing Rock Reservation in South Dakota, North Dakota, who I met during the Standing Rock issues. We grew up 60 miles from each other. She became homeless yesterday. She is a disabled Native American woman with a disabled son, who she's a caretaker of. She and her son are now living in their van here in Salem. There are many people, many stories. The city, homeless people, businesses, churches, advocates need to collaborate. It hasn't happened yet. We need to go on to the next level of having this become everyone's issue, because it is. Everyone is someone's child, brother, sister, parent. Everyone is someone's loved one.
Daniel Rushee? Followed by David Engen?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Roslin. I'm a retired, well, I'm a university professor and a 33-year resident of Salem, presently from Ward 2. My wife and I are about to spend our sixth night volunteering at one of four warming shelters. It's been an eye-opening experience for us, as has been commented on by Counselor Anderson. Recently, the Salem Police swept at least four areas where our homeless were camped on the outer fringes of Salem. These included Wallace Marine Park, Cascade Gateway Park, a location known as The Quarry and Portland Road. In the past, the homeless were permitted to resettle in swept areas after a certain period of time. I understand that this is no longer the case. The police representing the city did not offer them any place to go. Now, many of these folks are camped in various places closer to downtown, especially adjacent to the Arches Building. Tonight, you members of the Salem City Council will decide whether or not to sweep again. Such a decision will, once again, kick the can down the road, fail to solve the problem, is shortsighted and cruel. Why not at least wait a few months when Partners United Way and Inside Out Ministries will open a new overnight shelter for 50 to 60 women? These women are vulnerable and continuously subject to increased risk of rape, robbery, and assault. In addition, the Salem Housing Authority's Homeless Rental Assistant Program, known as HRAP, is slated to come up with a significant amount of housing for both women and men. The other issue on which you will be voting is a proposed confiscation of unattended possessions. This sets up a vicious cycle for a homeless person needing to go to a job, a job interview, a doctor's appointment, or a detox program. This person will have to choose between keeping their appointment and thus risk having their few possessions stolen or confiscated, or they could miss the appointment, possibly losing the opportunity to break out of the cycle of homelessness and despair. Salem is better than this. Rather than drive our homeless citizens out of their current encampments during the cold months, possibly into our residential areas, why not cut them some slack by allowing the camps to remain for now, adding porta-potties and trash receptacles, providing folks with lockers in which to store their things, and addressing some of their other needs while they await these new opportunities for housing and social services? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Just, Counselor Kaser?
I'd just, I'd just like to know, Mr. Roslin, is that?
Yes.
Where, where do you live?
I live in the Bush Park neighborhood.
So, Ward 2?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other? Okay. Thank you very much. David Engen? Followed by Holly Oakes Miller?
Yeah, my, my name is David Engen. I live at 1145 14th Street Northeast. Pearl Harbor Day, there are certain times in history when something happens that it's like somebody's torn history apart and changed everything forever. That's, that was Pearl Harbor Day. I wouldn't have joined the Navy if, if Pearl Harbor Day had not happened. I'm sure of that. But I really came down here tonight to thank all you folks who are putting in your time and energy to make the city of Salem better. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, David. None of you have a question for David? How much does he appreciate all of you? Holly? Followed by Julie Eaton?
Hello, I'm Holly Oakes Miller. My partner, Gary Miller, and I oppose all versions of Ordinance Bill 1019. Since last week's City Council meeting, we learned that the city of Salem spends more than $5.2 million a year on issues related to homelessness. And of that, $4.7 million goes to the Salem Police Department. These expenditures and the current status of Ordinance 1019 are evidence that, in practice, our city leaders support criminalization of houseless neighbors, of our houseless neighbors. The National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty issued a report titled, "No Safe Place: The Criminalization of Homelessness in U.S. Cities." They found that criminalization is the most expensive and the least effective way of dealing with homelessness. They state that there is a growing body of research comparing the cost of homelessness, including the cost of criminalization, with the cost of providing housing to houseless folks. And it shows that housing is the most affordable option. Criminalization, as outlined in the report, could be camping bans, sit/lie bans, and bans storing personal property in public spaces, all issues that this ordinance was originally intended to address and two that are included in the current version. Not only is criminalizing our houseless neighbors a bad idea, costly and ineffective, it opens up the city to future legal challenges. In 2018, seven homeless people sued the city of Boise over a ban on camping in public, and the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that if the city doesn't have enough shelter beds available, enforcing a camping ban violates the constitutional ban on cruel and unusual punishment. By approving a similar ban on public camping without providing enough shelter space, the city of Salem is opening itself up to future litigation at taxpayer expense. We agree with the court. Criminalizing people with nowhere to go is the very definition of cruel and unusual punishment. We urge the city to abandon efforts to further criminalize houselessness. Instead, the city should continue working to fully implement the recommendations put forth by the Downtown Homeless Task Force, while also pursuing real solutions that provide housing for our houseless community members. All evidence shows that housing people is the most effective solution, it is the lowest-cost solution, and it is the moral solution.
Thank you. Julie Eaton? And then Lanell Wilcox?
Hello, my name is Julie Eaton, and I am from Ward 2. I felt compelled today to come down and oppose the Ordinance 1019. People that have come before, before me have kind of taken all my talking points, so, thank you. We're all on the same page. So, I'll just, you know, I'll go for the emotions here. It's cruel. I mean, how could you pick a worst time of year to take these people's shelters away? I mean, how can you even? I don't understand how you can even go to bed at night and think about taking these people's shelters away. It's unconstitutional, as been, has been stated before. Kick the can down the road is what I've been putting in my emails to you guys. We're just kicking the, I was here two years ago talking about the same thing. You guys are just kicking the can down the road. It's lazy. It's lazy. And it's, it's, it's not a solution. It's not a long-term, it's not even a short-term solution. People don't disappear just because you take their stuff away from them. It just leaves them vulnerable, especially women and children. I, too, was shocked to hear that the city spent last year $5.2 million and $4.7 million was hoovered up by the police department. I just gasped at that number. I mean, they've already got their, their over-budget loaded police department, but now they're also taking the money that's meant for houseless people. That just really was shocking to me. I, I do take pause, though, because Counselor Anderson said that he's going to propose that this be postponed so that you guys can look for a lot somewhere in the city. Because if, if finding a compassionate and more permanent solution to this is maybe outside of your scope or expertise, look to other communities to see what they've been doing about this. I just saw something today, in Olympia, they found a municipal lot, put out some pallets, put out uniform tents, provided dumpsters, provided porta-potties, treated, treated them with dignity, and gave them someplace to stay. Again, not a long-term solution, but definitely a lot not leaving all these people out in the cold with no shelter, which, if my city does that, how, how am I supposed to hold my head high and say I'm from Salem when, if we're going to treat people like this? Because they are people, they are fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Lanell Wilcox? Followed by Pamela Lyons Nelson?
Hi, my name is Lanell, and my understanding is this ordinance was created hugely to be able to have officers have a path for connecting to people and initiating contact and connecting them to services. And a ban on property being unattended from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. will reduce the very goal that they're hoping for. As it stands, many people that I know are already taking a significant risk to leave their property, to go places and do things. And if we're connecting people to more services and people are willing to take that risk and leave their property unattended, they might be doing the very things that we hope people will do to move forward. They might be going to court dates, medical appointments, counseling appointments, NA meetings, AA meetings, pursuing sobriety, pursuing jobs, pursuing resumes, job training, and all those things are going to happen mostly during business hours, during that 7:00 to 9:00 ban of leaving your property unattended. And people are already making that risk of having their property be stolen while they're doing those things. If we add more penalties and more risk for people to do the very things that we want them to do, the whole point of why we're trying to do this ordinance, to be able to connect to people, people to services, it's just ironically going to reduce the very thing we're trying to gain. As people connect to services, they're still homeless, they still have property, they still have places they need to go, services they want to pursue, and having more risk for their stuff to be confiscated, not just stolen, but also confiscated, is just, it's not right, and it actually flies in the face of what, what the reason for this is being presented as. It's really hard and uncomfortable to see people so visibly living in poverty, yet people are telling me over and over again that their shame is bigger than our disapproval. And maybe it's time for us to sit in our discomfort and just figure out what we can do to enable people to pursue the very paths that we say we want them to pursue. And this isn't it. So, I hope that we could delay a property ban until at least people have a viable and safe way to have their things stored, so that they can do the very things we want them to do, and that this ordinance was designed to partly help them do. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Pamela? Followed by Angelina Lockhart?
Pamela Lyons Nelson, Ward 1. I am, I also have had many of my talking points taken, which probably just about suits my voice capacity tonight. So, I would just want to point out that we only have about 320 spaces, shelter spaces, available. We know, and it's a very conservative estimate, that we have over 700 unsheltered people in town. Over 700. We don't even come close. On a cold night, we can handle some of them if there are volunteers enough to, to staff the shelters. But that's only 32 and below, and I thank God that we did it that way this year, rather than whatever our standard was last year that was just inhumane. So, we, even, right now, even if people want to have shelter, there is no shelter for way over half of the people who need it. The immediate implementation is cruel and possibly unusual. I wish it were more unusual, given the impact on the population affected. A tent is the second-to-last option for many of the people who are in those tents. The second-to-last option. Second-to-last resort. What's your last resort? Mine is living with my daughter. That is not, that is not available to these people. They are at their last resort. Some of the people who can, all of those who are in a tent can also go to a shelter sometimes. But the ones who cannot go to a shelter for whatever reason, this is their last resort. I, I oppose this, the thing as it's set up right now, and I want it to be reevaluated in six months, and I really want that we delay it until we have a spot for anyone who needs it. And I mean a camping spot, because these are not people who have the resources to do anything other than camp. And we, as a city, don't seem to have the resources to put them in, in housing. The balance here that we try to make, the false equivalency, is middle-class discomfort and fear of homeless people against life-threatening conditions. That is nowhere close to the balance that we would be... That is nowhere close to the balance that we would be trying... That people are trying to persuade us that it is. Life-threatening conditions versus middle-class discomfort. I think we all know who wins. So I oppose that, and I hope that is also taken into consideration.
Thank you. Angelina Lockhart, then Sarah Parkinson. Parkinson.
I just want to start out by saying that if it wasn't for Arches paying my rent today, I would be affected by this policy that you are thinking about voting on. Tonight, I hope you vote to delay the vote until Counselor Leon can be here to vote in person. In the end, I hope you do the right thing and vote this heartless policy down. This policy is made to hurt those who are in most need of help. It's made to make the business owners downtown happy without any concern as to where the people who currently live downtown can go. Everyone who sleeps outside is used to being told to move, but not used to being told where they can go and be left alone. You say that you like the Housing First Initiative, but you forget that that tent that you are thinking about banning is their first home. You can't ban their first home if you don't have a second one ready for them. Right now, you don't. A new law should be passed that criminalizes buildings being left empty and not turning to temporary housing. It should be illegal for a banker or private owner to leave a home empty and a desert parent instead of renting it out to a family in need. The city should have agreements with the empty lot owners, so people can camp on their property and have porta-potties and showers installed. There is a huge empty building across from the downtown transit center that has been empty for as long as I've lived in Salem that could temporarily house hundreds of people. Why isn't it? Why are the homeless ones who have... The ones who have to be hurt again? There should be a new homeless commission put together that actually includes people who have been or are currently homeless to come up with solutions to the houseless epidemic. This policy is not the answer. If any policy hurts the most vulnerable among you, it is wrong. You're here to help the most vulnerable, not appease the wealthy. Counselors, I've knocked doors with most of you, and I've campaigned with most of you. And you know I count you guys as friends. Please do not make me knock doors against you. If you vote for this, I will, because you will prove to me that you don't care about the most vulnerable, which has included me. I knocked doors with you when I was homeless. This would have hurt me. Please do not do this. I want you to be part... I want to be part of the solution with you. I'm wanting to be on that commission. I want you guys to be on that commission. But this won't get it. I know that if you actually talk to people who are homeless right now, that are living on the streets, they would tell you how much this is going to kill them. If you want them to slit their wrists, vote for this law.
Sarah Parkinson.
Good evening. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't know. Good evening. Sarah Parkinson, Highland Neighborhood, 69 years. Thank you. Honestly, there's been a lot of energy in spending nights at the shelters. That's really incredible. I'm impressed. I want to talk a little bit about perception. Folks, we've been here before. Downtown Youth Concerned Task Force, ring any bells? I'll bet you're all too young to know. Downtown Youth Concerned Task Force, this was about 1992 to 1998. The very same problems we're looking at here, only it was young people that we were having the trouble with. This is when we put the transit wall down in front of the courthouse. I want to talk about perception. I've heard a lot about perception and the false equivalency. Thank you. We put a transit wall down on... Across the street from... In front of the courthouse, actually. People got off those buses, they saw that great big lawn, and what do you think they did? That communist, I heard it called a communist game called Frisbee. Hacky sack. Nursing babies chatting, smoking pot, cigarettes, whatever. The people in the courthouse, they believed that these people outside were doing this specifically to disrespect them. There's nobody outside knew that. So what we have here is the people inside believe something that the people outside are doing, and neither one of them knows that neither one of them are right. There's what, 60 perceptions or so of me in here tonight? How many of them think I'm a subsailor? How many of them think that I was Chief Moore's playground monitor in the third grade? I mean, you know? People are right. There's a false equivalency going on here, and the most important people are not the ones that already have a house. I heard six kids yesterday. Gee, if we all stand in a parking place, can we pretend to be a car? I met the mayor of Tent Town the morning it was so cold. He was coming out of his tent. He's a very large man. He's a businessman. He said, "I understand what you guys are facing. I had the same problem." Now I'm facing a triple bypass at the age of 51. He said, "I've made every mistake there is to make." These are your people, for God's sakes.
Thank you. Gerald Turner, followed by Kathleen Thorpe, and then Angel Villamore.
Hello, my name is Gerald Turner, and I am a resident of Ward Six. I urge the City Council to vote against this policy, because it is, what I refer to as a trifecta of bad policy. It is cruel, it is ineffective, and it is legally dubious. The moral arguments have been stated by others far more clearly and far more articulately than I can make. I am instead going to argue to the effectiveness of this camping ban. Research has shown, time and again, that a Housing First process is what gets people off the streets. By criminalizing homelessness, you're instead going to be, with your policy, keeping people on the streets, the very outcome you say you were trying to avoid. I appreciate that Counselor Anderson earlier made a motion to postpone voting on this until we can get a solution, a place where people can camp. Until that time, it is completely counterproductive to try and ban people from doing something they don't have a choice about. So, I'm going to conclude by saying that this policy will not work. It will not do what it proposes to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathleen Thorpe.
Good evening. Oh, me. Kathleen Thorpe. And 2943 Tess Avenue Northeast. We know that when homeless are pushed from one place to another, that they are destabilized. And I think the question before us now is, where do they go? Thanks. I need all the courage. We're not looking good right now. People who live and work in the downtown area are frustrated with the homeless for a list of reasons. One of them is pretty basic, not having access to bathrooms. The homeless are feeling worthless. Saturday night, when I was serving dinner at Arches, Jeff told me he considers suicide often. And I said, "Jeff, you're a hero to me. Sue, my life would be less without you." The homeless feel vulnerable. And I'm wondering if we can find an interim solution. We know that the use of public or private land is not possible for approved camping because it's not in our zoning codes. We don't have an ability to use tiny homes. We don't have safe-spot camping. And with the citywide camping ban, we're pushing our homeless off into, we don't know where next, really. Salem is not alone. Seattle is trying permitted and supervised camping. That'll provide porta-potties, garbage collection, limited access. And by that, I mean, they're not wide-open camps, so people come in and go in, they need to limit their... The number of people there. Limited duration in one area. In Seattle, they're using 90 days. There's a limited number of campers. In Seattle, they're using 100. It's a private-public partnership. And at the moment, UGM is providing oversight on these camps. There are frequently asked questions, and basically, in Seattle, they're using parish properties in their partnership. The tent city, as I've noted before, is about 90 days, and typically, they don't allow huge numbers.
Time's up.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Angel.
Good evening, Council, and good evening, Mayor. I'm gonna try to do this kind of by the seat of my pants. I really have nothing prepared. And when I was young, I was an actor, so it's gonna be kind of an improv thing. I'm a success story, somehow. I got very fortunate that the HRAP, also known as, basically, it's originally called the Housing First, which this young man over here spoke about. They kind of picked me, I don't know how. The Salem Housing Authority got me a place to live, so I don't have to live down the street over here on Trade and Church. I don't know what's going on. I was talking to this cab driver this morning, took me to a medical appointment. She said, "Our culture is spoiled." I said, "I think you're right. We have a very spoiled culture." I've been... As soon as I found out about this Housing First thing that happened in Finland, I can't stop talking about it. And when I see homeless people, I tell them, "Don't ever give up." I might be riding my bike, and I'll say, "Don't ever give up. Whatever you do, don't give up." I want to talk about the Salem Housing Authority. I can't believe they only have three social workers. Finland... Helsinki itself hired a small army of social workers to go out there, find these people, put them into housing, and then find out why are they homeless? Is it a mental problem? Is it a physical problem? Lack of education? Lack of job skills? You name it. Only 5% of that population remains homeless. It can be done here if you want to be a shining star in this country. Well, I'll give up my time for other folks to talk. You have a great evening.
Thank you, Angel. That's all I have. Signed up, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Go ahead. If someone else... Someone else raise your hand?
My name is Sandra, and I work with youth in Salem. I've been working with youth for about three and a half years now, so I've learned a lot from working in this area and also having grown up and lived here. And one of the things I want to ask you all, please answer this question. What does it take to have human rights? What do you... What does it take to have human rights? Can somebody answer that from the City Council? Anyone want to answer? It takes being human, right? You don't need to do anything else but be human to have a human rights. And with policies like this, or resolutions like this, you know, what it seems to me is that we're forgetting what human rights are, and we're basing it on homeowners' rights. And to me, that is not... We're not practicing human rights. I heard earlier that, you know, we're going to be celebrating human rights. But that's a huge hypocrisy, if in Salem we're thinking about people who do not own a... Who cannot own a home, do not have the same human rights as someone that does. In the past, I have told the story of my... In my family, my mother was couch surfing because she couldn't afford the rent. My mom worked full-time. Despite of that, the rent spike was so bad that she had to leave her apartment in less than three weeks. And my mom was lucky that she had someone to stay with. But many people don't have that luck. And houselessness is... That makes it seem houselessness is not an individual issue, it's a social issue. We have to look at the social aspects of what causes houselessness to start thinking about how we can treat, you know, someone who is houseless. And another thing that I would like to remind everybody is that the people that have spoken today, only a minority have been directly impacted by houselessness. Someone who is houseless is still part of this community, and still deserves to have their voice be heard. And, you know, as people, we're not here to serve people who are houses. We should be sitting with them, eating with people who are houses, talking to them, and hearing what it is that their needs are, rather than us speaking for them. If that's not happening, then, you know, there is something wrong in the process by which the laws are being passed. As a person of color, I have seen and I have felt what discrimination looks like and what it feels like. And I know that, you know, this is a discriminatory policy that criminalizes people who are poor, and it criminalizes people who cannot afford to live in a home. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and ward, or address, either one.
Pamela Watson. I live at 7077 Lipscomb Street, Southeast. And I just wanted to kind of support the people that have come up here tonight, this evening. I really feel that we're at a breaking point in our city right now with our... With the citizens, with our unsheltered population. And I feel that we're really, and I hope, that we're at a point that we can start to sit at the table and start looking at real solutions for our unsheltered population. We have a humanitarian crisis that is waiting to happen tonight. If you vote to ban this camping, these people, like it has been said, they have been pushed out of every place that they've been able to live, in the city of Salem and on the outskirts of Salem. And now they're holding on to a small piece of land that they're at now. If they are sent away from that area, where are they going to go? That is the $60 million question. And we haven't had an answer from anybody. Not one of you have said anything. And they have nowhere to go. And so we need to come together. We need to start being willing to think outside the box. Whether we like it or not, this is the new reality in the United States of America. This isn't just Salem, Oregon. We have an unsheltered population crisis going on all over the United States. And it's not going to end anytime soon. So we have to be willing to look at other ways. Somebody doesn't like camping, well, you don't have to camp. But you can't tell me that if you're camping in the mud, to be given a pallet with a connoisseur hut with a door on it that you can lock, that you can put possessions in, isn't a little bit of an uplift for somebody that can help stabilize them, to stop the Maslow's hierarchy of going around endlessly on that first rung, of having possessions, having them stolen? I see this all the time. I'm on the streets doing room service. I wake up early Sunday mornings. I've been doing it for over half a year. Make coffee at home, and I bring them down, as do other volunteers. And we wake up the unsheltered in the doorways. And we wake up the unsheltered in the doorways so that the business people can, can arrive, and they've been packing up and get ready to leave. But so many of these people, you know, have been sitting there and they're on lists for housing. You know, they've been on lists for years, and they haven't moved anywhere. And so what they do every day, every morning when I see them, they have things stolen. Then they've got to go spend the day to go get the possessions all back again. They need to have something else happen.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So I hope that you will take this into consideration.
Yep.
My name's Wiley Thompson. I live in the Fayray area of Ward Three. Being a young activist in this area, this is a, this is a problem that I, I've seen not addressed in the proper way in Salem. To find people who don't have the money to pay these fines and to continually criminalize homelessness in this area is something that can't be done. To push them out of places that they're living into, into the unknown, where they don't know where they're going to go next, when they're already having a hard enough time finding where they're going to go next. By pushing them out of where they already are into something possibly even more dangerous and continuing the abject cycle of poverty that marginally affects communities that in Salem are already underrepresented and affected worse by, by certain policies is just abhorrent in my view. And I think that if you have any heart at all, you really should vote against Ordinance ten nineteen because it just completely disregards any, any humanity of these people. And through treating them with dignity, there's, there's methods to, to getting them back into housing and helping them actually be able to contribute. And I'm not saying that they don't contribute because each person has their own, their own way and their own, their own life that they, they have that contributes to our society. But to criminalize them and to push them out of where they are is just abhorrent to me. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello? I'm Colt. I'm not from a ward in your city.
What's your name again?
Colt Bradley.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not from a ward in your city. And like a lot of other people here today, I had a prepared statement I was gonna give, but everybody else has basically already hit every point that I was gonna make. Per the Eighth Amendment, the camping ban is, it's unconstitutional. It's cruel and unusual punishment. And I just walked down here from Liberty Parkade, and it's cold outside. I don't know how much time you guys spend outside, but it's, it's gonna freeze tonight. And every one of the warming centers are open. And I can almost guarantee you, that's not gonna be enough for everybody sleeping on the streets. We just spent holiday giving thanks, and we're coming up on a holiday where we're supposed to give gifts. The only thing I really have to say is anybody who's voting in favor of a camping ban, you all should be ashamed of yourselves. And if you do, you should be out there with the police saying, "Merry Christmas. You can't camp here." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. Move on then. Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Kizer. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, I just forgot to mention it. Counselor Hoy just wanted to, uh, register a no vote on three point two A, which is the referral of the employee paid payroll tax.
Oh, you, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just registering a no vote on that and then, sorry for hopping in front of what's actually on the consent calendar this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. The consent calendar consists of item three point two A, which is, which would adopt Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash eighty-four to refer Ordinance Bill Number eleven dash nineteen, creating an employee-based payroll tax to Salem voters at the May nineteenth, two thousand twenty election, adopt the explanatory statement, and direct the City Attorney to draft the ballot title. Item three point three A is, uh, authorizes the City Manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for tree planting and maintenance on the north side of Salem Parkway between Cherry Avenue Northeast and Hyacinth Street Northeast. Item three point three B authorizes the City Manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for the removal of abandoned asbestos cement waterline pipe along Forty-Fifth Avenue Northeast. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say no. Motion passes. We have no public hearings. We have no special orders of business. The information reports, good news. We're moving along on the Peace Mosaic, it looks like. Yay? Anything else?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the historic landmarks decision on downtown on the seven-story hotel. And that's item, uh, six E. Uh, I'd just like to state that it certainly seems like, um, a good use of property that although it was historic, was of no value and very little historic value, if any at all. And, um, you know, I think this points out that historic preservation in and of itself as a goal is not always sacrosact, although I will tell you that generally I support it all. But this is a good place to have the waiver. And I also commend the designs because I think the designs as shown for the proposed hotel made good use of the image of the Capitol Center and the Pioneer Trust, uh, building, both of which are very close to the new building. So even though it's not historic, um, I think they have brought in some historic design elements that are present downtown.
Any other comments on the information report? It's all right. Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment and give thanks to Lynn Takata, who I see here in the audience today for all of her work on, uh, saving and relocating the Peace Mosaic. So thank you, Lynn.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to first readings then. Counselor Hoy?
Ordinance Bill thirteen dash one nine and ordinance repealing SRC Chapter forty-eight relating to plastic carryout bags, SRC four eight point zero one zero through four eight point zero six zero.
I move staff recommendation.
Second by Kizer. Do I say anything? Want to tell us your shopping experience?
I have pleasant shopping experiences at my local Roth's where I'm a dedicated and shopper. And I see so many people who I would not suspect or expect to be bringing their bags from home. And they, so many folks do. And, um, I have not seen it be a negative. And, uh, I think it's been a good thing. And this, this, just for the audience's knowledge, this repeals our bag ban because the state of Oregon has adopted a ban that will supersede it. So essentially, ours will become moot. And so we don't like to have laws that conflict. So we are repealing ours in lieu of the state ban that will carry it forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I have the same experience with Counselor Hoy when I shop at the South Salem Ross and Life Source and Natural Grocers and Trader Joe's and Fred Meyer's, all of which are in South Salem. That's where I get my reports from. I also will point out that the city of Salem law is in effect through December thirty-first, and the state law becomes effect January one. So we're still covered until then.
Anyone else? It's a chance to advertise that local store. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're gonna take a five-minute break. Counselor Leon? Her votes, okay. Just want, but we know she's there. Okay, good. So what marker is present at this point? Okay. Very good. Okay, you wanna call a roll?
We have to.
I recognize Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I have a motion to amend that I need to do before we do roll call.
Okay, go ahead. You're, you're first. We'll let you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend Propose ninety-five point seven two oh subsection B to add, quote, "except where designated by the city," end quote, to the beginning of the sentence. The idea being that this would designate spaces in the city.
We have the second first before you.
Yeah.
We all know what, okay. Okay, go ahead then, Counselor, and describe your plan here.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. So for those of you who have your materials in front of you, what we're talking about is a camping ban. And the ordinance as currently written bans all camping on all public property citywide. Now, I've given this ordinance an awful lot of thought. I've spent a lot of time researching on my own the feasibility, the legality, and the humanity of a citywide ban on camping. And that is why I am moving to amend, to make an exception, to allow camping on a public space or spaces where designated by the city. The term designated doesn't mean that we paid a dime, doesn't mean that we've taken ownership of anything. It just means that we will identify where you can publicly camp. And I will just briefly summarize some of the reasons why I believe we need this amendment. One, there is an urgent need. We know we have freezing temperatures outside. We are faced with an urgent need to respond to the growing concentration of unmanaged homelessness in our downtown core and the associated public health and safety concerns. Two, this is about humanity. As I mentioned, we have freezing temperatures. I had ice on my roads this morning. The homeless include persons with disabilities, the elderly, and children, all of whom are very vulnerable to freezing temperatures. Our homeless include women who are fleeing domestic violence and sex trafficking. Having a designated camping area that is secure, that is gated, and that is monitored is much safer for a survivor than camping in the shadows. Third, I very much suspect that this will be more cost-effective. We've seen in our papers and heard testimony about the amount of money that we are spent on responding to incidents of homelessness. And if you look at the national research, we've heard a great deal about Housing First. We already know, anyone who's been paying attention to the testimony in this realm, that Housing First is something that the city of Salem is already pursuing, and it is most cost-effective, that it is much cheaper in the long run to actually house someone than it is to run them through a perpetual cycle of interaction with law enforcement, being taken to jail, being taken to court, repeat. There is a big difference between the costs of managing homelessness and solving homelessness. And uprooting a person each time means that they start from zero every single time that they are uprooted. Last, this is about opportunity. Housing is a basic need, and not being able to leave your belongings even for twenty-four hours somewhere, safe and secure, while you go to work, while you go to the Social Security Office, means that you're not ready to start rebuilding your lives. When you have a safe place to stay, you can now go out and focus on what you really want to do, which is to get back to work. Because that's the other reality of our homelessness, that there are many, many homeless people who are a flat tire away from being homeless. Or all it took was one or two things outside of their control, a layoff at their job, medical bills that they couldn't afford, an eviction. There are so many little things that tip someone for the slightest brush into homelessness. And a tent is not a permanent solution. Don't get me wrong. I don't want permanent tent cities. Nobody that I know wants to live in a tent when they would much rather live in a house. And I know that there are many people who simply find tents unseemly and unsightly. I understand that. But pretending the problem doesn't exist doesn't make it go away. So I am moving for this amendment. I have seen online, there are examples of camps gone good and camps gone bad. We need something safe, secure, and clean with basic hygiene services, garbage service, a code of conduct that prohibits drugs and alcohol, oversight, and much more. There are examples out there of camps who have effectively lifted people out of homelessness and back into the workforce once and for all. So I believe that this program can be done right. But it is going to take community support from our businesses, from our houses of worship, from persons volunteering at the day centers, the shelters, the warming centers. This is gonna take a true community effort. I know tent cities isn't ideal, but we don't live in an ideal world, do we? I move to amend.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, I would ask for some clarification if I could. It's my understanding that the amendment is, um, that there will be no, excuse me, there'll be no camping on a public property except for those public properties designated by the city. I don't hear any timeframe to that. I don't hear, I mean, I, the, the resolution, I absolutely agree with you. We need to work together as a community on this issue. But I, there's no specificity to that in your amendment. If I understand the amendment correctly, basically, it's the ordinance as passed last week with the amendment that if and when the city designates areas for camping, camping will be allowed in those areas.
Counselor, I think I'll, I'll remind you of comments made by Counselor Anderson. I think there's another, uh, motion that will come. I, I think this is part of a package that will include an evaluation of, uh, potential alternative sites for, uh, a program like, uh, Counselor Nordike described, or some other, you know, whatever else we can come up with. But I think that's what Counselor Anderson will be talking about. Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, I guess that's part of what I'll be talking about. But first, in response to Counselor Nordike's motion, we had a brief off-the-record and without a public meeting, without a quorum discussion, uh, during the break. And, um, this motion, in effect, says the same things that I had proposed earlier when I talked about it, uh, that we need to do something to designate someplace else because, uh, the testimony's pretty strong. What happens? These people aren't gonna disappear because we say they can't, they can't camp in the city. So I will, in response to, um, so I won't be making my particular motion, but I will be making a second motion, assuming this passes, to postpone enactment of the ordinance, uh, for two weeks from today as opposed to immediately under the, uh, clause. And then I, then I will be asking the council to suspend its rules to make another motion in terms of what we would want back from the city along the lines of what I discussed earlier in the council comments.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the comments from all the counselors so far on this topic. I, I, uh, support everything you've said at this point. I'm wondering if perhaps we should consider, we, you know, we talked about a sunset, uh, last time. I'm wondering if this would be a better or another opportunity for a sunset in that if we did go down this road that is new territory for us with, uh, public camping, if we put a sunset on that provision so that we would have a, so we could allay any concerns that this is gonna be like the, the permanent solution, or, and I'm putting that in air quotes, so that maybe we get that through this season, uh, of difficulty and give people an opportunity to explore other solutions while other things come online and that sort of thing.
Counselor, I, let me, let me try something on you on this. This may come as a, if, if there is a place, or let's just assume there will be a location, that as that is worked out, we may want to put a sunset on that location. And that would be the kind, I mean, but that might be the time to do it. And it may be a place you don't want to put one on, but you'll, rather than have a hard, uh, date in place, kind of wait till you sort of see how this evolves a little bit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. And I would also just like to wrap into this conversation. I had intended to bring this up next week, but, uh, since we're talking about alternatives, I would really like this, uh, at some point, be able to direct this, the staff to explore authorized parking. We, you know, you and I had a brief chat about- You know, you and I had a brief chat about allowing churches to sponsor people to park in their parking lots, that sort of thing on an unauthorized and limited basis. I think that that can be part of the solution as well, and I think that could be a really good option for some folks. So, I would really like us to put some energy behind that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've had some offers from churches. And we have, and I thought Counselor Nordike spoke to it quite well, too. We've had large discussions now in this community with business, nonprofit, and religious groups about just the kind of thing we're talking about tonight and where we're going. I think we're going to see people step up very, very quickly. We had a meeting about two weeks ago that really pulled a large group, about 75 of these groups together, trying to get to these sort of solutions. So, I think it's finding the impetus for it and a direction for it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with that. I do have one question. I was asking a couple of different staff members during the recess. Is there anything in our ordinance or code currently that would prohibit a private landowner from offering up a piece of property? Say, let's say we can't find a piece of city property. Let's say somebody has a vacant lot that was suitable. Is there some, is that allowable, or would we need to do something? Maybe the city attorney might weigh in on that.
To the question, there's going to probably be some land use considerations, whether the zoning is appropriate for it, as well as fire code issues and whatnot. It depends on which property, where it's located, and what the zoning is.
Okay. Are they things that are insurmountable or surmountable?
We'd have to look at that, but there's a potential to do an emergency declaration. I know Portland's done something similar to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Counselor Osick?
Yes, I'm just a little concerned maybe we're rushing things, because I'm hearing two-week postponement. Getting a gated, secure, safe, and healthy community set up in two weeks sounds difficult. And so, I don't know if maybe we need, we need to, rather than postpone the enactment a couple of weeks, bring this back as a topic for conversation in a couple of weeks, as to where we are after we have a report.
Okay. Counselor Kazer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, Counselor Osick, I would say that it's not, what we're proposing tonight is not that gated and supervised or all of that, but just designating a place instead of people setting up where they choose to set up, and perhaps that's not a great place to be, the city can designate, and then they can go, you know, set up their campsite there. I support everything that's been said by Counselor Nordike and Anderson, Hoy, you know. I think we can kind of figure it out. I do think it's important that, for all the reasons I said it last time, I think it's important we have an ordinance like this in place. But I understand, too, that we need to have compassion and empathy, and maybe just some more regulated practice of camping, just like we regulate basically everything else in this city about what you can do with property and not do with property. So, I think it's a good balance. I do agree with some type of sunset provision for the places that are selected. I don't see this as a permanent solution. I don't see it as the solution, but I think it'll get us, it is a bit further down the road and will be a good, can be a good kind of middle ground that we're looking for.
Yeah, I think the, a good point, Counselor. I think we heard a catalog of, I think United Way was bringing a large shelter for women online. We're seeing other shelters. We've got plans for shelters coming online. I mean, there's quite a bit going on, and we may, we may actually begin to meet some of the need. Hopefully, we'll find more landlords that want to join us in housing the hardest to house in the community as well, so. Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Just that this thing is continuously evolving here, and we're at second reading.
That's right. It's a fairly simple motion.
Well, yeah, that's one, and I know there's going to be at least two sitting off to the side of me, which I'm not quite sure what they are yet. He's mentioned to where they might be going, but it would be nice to have everything wrapped, or just send the whole dang thing back to staff to figure out what all these pieces are.
I hear one piece.
No. Well, I'm going to hear two pieces here.
You will in a minute.
Look for other pieces of property, two-week extension, but one week before we actually see it again, and staff's going to go spend a lot of time looking at potentials for other properties.
We're going to pass a, we're going to pass this tonight under the scenario, I think, that's been described, with a two-week enactment period. And in that, next week, Counselor Anderson is going to bring a request, which I think the city understands it's already working on, to find city-owned properties, take a look at what's out there, where are we? And we've done this before. We know where a lot of this property isn't and is. So, we'll actually have some of that. But I think it's fairly straightforward. It's trying to figure out how to enact this in an organized fashion. I really think that's what the counselors are trying to do. I really think that's what's going on.
I'm just concerned with what will come back next week, and will we send it back again to include some other pieces in it, because we won't have an engrossed ordinance next week? And then we have, like, four weeks before our next meeting.
Really simple motion.
The mayor, I think probably off-mic, asked if we'll need to bring an engrossed ordinance back for approval, and if this is the only amendment to this ordinance, no, we can interlineate the ordinance with that simple clause.
Okay.
It's, it would be, and if I could make one more clarification, the ordinance would be passed tonight. What the other discussion point the council is having is when would it be effective? Currently, it's got an emergency clause. It would be effective tonight, once it's passed. I think there's been discussion to delay the effective date for a week or two.
We just need to make sure we have everything identified on what we're going to be doing, if there's an engrossment.
Counselor Hoy's ready to go with that, or Kazer to get that in, or Anderson or Nordike. I think everybody's ready to put that in. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Lewis?
Yeah, I just, help me out. We're voting on the ordinance plus the one amendment.
Yes. Amendment right now. We're going to get to the ordinance here in a minute, okay?
All right.
All right. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, before we go to the vote, do we need to, do we need to add language about changing the emergency clause to two weeks out now, or is that later?
Let's do a separate amendment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Right.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay.
She said aye for the opposed, right?
No.
No, she, I think she was there. Okay, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I move we amend the emergency clause of the just, of the amended motion to take place two weeks, to become in effect two weeks from tonight.
Sixteenth, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, this, the effective date will be to the 16th of December, okay? That's the amendment. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Ayes.
Whoop, there she is. It's unanimous. There we go. Counselor Anderson?
Now, we've amended the motion. I don't think there's much more to do to this ordinance. I think yours might be a second.
I agree, I agree. We can vote on the ordinance.
So, let's go to the final vote. Are you okay?
So, procedurally, we're still at second reading, so at this point, the...
It's just, she reads the...
Right, then there'll be a roll call vote on the ordinance as just has been amended.
So, I need a motion first?
No.
You don't need a motion.
Okay, sorry, I got lost.
Engrossed Ordinance Bill 10-19, An Ordinance Relating to Conduct on Sidewalks, Repealing 97.720 through 95.770, Creating New 95.720, 730, 740, 750, 760, 770, 780, 790, 800, and 990. Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor LeYoung?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I move to suspend the council rules concerning offering of a motion by a counselor at the time of the meeting. I don't know if I need to explain myself more, city attorney or not.
Maybe if I could explain yourself more.
Okay, good. That's even better. Tell me what I meant to say.
So, if you're, typically, if counselors are going to bring a motion, they need to do, provide it in writing prior to the council meeting. This didn't happen in this case, so this would allow council to act on Counselor Anderson's motion if you suspend the rules.
What he said.
Okay, so we need two-thirds votes to suspend the rules. Let's raise our hands, all those in favor. Counselor LeYoung, your hand's up.
So, are we voting in favor to suspend right now?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, because I'm getting cut off here and there.
Sure, yeah, it's to suspend the rules to let Counselor Anderson do a motion.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Motion passes.
Now, at the risk and possibility of the city attorney helping me out here, I move to call for a staff report delineating all vacant, unused, underused city property that might be used as a designated place for camping, inconsistent with the statute, to, along with a brief feasibility evaluation of each site.
Second, by Hoy.
And, well, if I could add one more of the second, no, to be presented at the next council meeting.
Yes, okay, sorry. Yeah, he understood that. Counselor Kazer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could offer maybe a friendly amendment to it in your motion to also include parks?
I accept that. I don't, I take that back, because I just said all city-owned property. That would include parks.
Exactly. City-owned parks. Let's not designate parks.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So, many of these parks have restricted covenants, and it just, boy, there's a road not to go down.
Just to clarify, that it wasn't just in Counselor Anderson's motions, it said unused, underutilized, so as long as it's all city property, we can look at as a whole.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Just wanted to be sure that you're talking about the next meeting, which is next Monday.
Yes.
That's correct. Counselor Nanki?
Just a question for staff as to what kind of a time commitment, and is that actually feasible to actually get a comprehensive report on all of the city properties out there and their level of usage?
Comprehensive, no, but a start at a list, yes.
Remember, we did this a couple of years ago. We've looked at these before.
Right, as part of the task force, I think, as well.
Well, yeah, yeah.
In a way.
But going back even further, I think going back three, four, four years, we had a look. Okay, Counselor?
Just in support of the motion, I think, you know, for right now, for the next seven days, this is probably one of our highest priorities as a city, since we just enacted the sidewalk, you know, or not sidewalk, but the camping ordinance, and this is the middle ground piece, so it's got to be the priority of the city to at least come up with a few spots. We don't need necessarily a comprehensive list, but also that we could be presented with these in a week, so that we can talk about also the possibilities of having sunsets on those and what it might look like. So, otherwise, we're going to be waiting several weeks, and then this ordinance will go into effect on the 16th.
Well, if you, I mean, you make a really good point. If it isn't resolved by the 16th, you're really not meeting again until January. So, it's a ways off again, so what you'll probably be looking for is, if you can find anything, it's going to be a true stopgap with a very short duration. And that's because it's in Busch Park or something, and I know you won't want them there long, right?
Okay, what else you got?
Yeah, I would just recommend to staff that they maybe focus on their top five, and we can get comprehensive at a future date, but we just need something now, like...
And if I may, the request is just available property, or how these campsites would be operated, and by whom, and under what rules?
I would say just the property for now, if you have time. It would be great to hear that, and under what both counselors Hoy and Kazer say, hopefully you can make time.
Okay.
Well, no, perhaps now is a good time.
Okay.
I appreciate, you know, the amendments that council has made in response to, you know, concerns about individual rights and the city being compassionate. I would like Chief Moore to come up and speak to our police department's response, currently, our past response, and the city's future response to the homeless, including statistics, evidence from our police department in response to concerns that counselors have had and that the public has had regarding the homeless. Also, the city does have responsibilities to enforce existing ordinances, and while camping in general has not risen to the level of a public nuisance or a public health issue, there are certain areas where we are pretty close. And Brady Rogers, who I would also like to come up and speak to council, has responsibilities under the ordinance, which council cannot waive, to enforce ordinances. So, I want council to be aware of our current administration and implementation of city ordinances, and also for council to be aware of other ordinances that may come into effect regarding certain camping areas that we currently have, if that would be all right with the mayor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Chief Moore or Brady, who goes first? Yeah, Rank.
Evening, council and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. Jerry Moore, chief of police. City manager Powers asked a variety of questions, and I'll try and uncover them as best I can. I think all of you have heard me say numerous times about our response to downtown issues and camping, and I will just summarize in saying that it has been our goal to try and connect people to resources whenever we are able to do so, and that our goal is not to take people to jail, but to try and give them the resources they need to be successful. That's the best summary I can give you. There's no room at the end, so arresting people for minor violations does no one any good, and it creates a...
When Chief Moore says room at the end, he's referring to the county jail. Our experience has been, the past few winters, that there has been shelter space available, and certainly when the warming centers are activated, there is capacity at the warming centers. And the people who are choosing not to go to those centers are making a personal choice, not a choice that's being imposed upon them by the city.
Thank you, and that would have been, that would have been part two, actually, and I appreciate that, those comments. What we have found for four and five years is a variety of issues, and maybe the hardest to house, if you will, people that are not interested in going to shelters, even when there's room at the Gospel Mission or wherever it may be, and that they prefer to live the lifestyle that they've chosen, which is, in many cases, and not all, there are, every story is different, but there's criminal activity among the homeless, there's drug use, there's alcohol issues, there's mental health issues, and those are the types of issues that brought the original SITLIE and the most recent Sidewalk Conduct Ordinance back to you, because, quite frankly, over a four- or five-year period, there has not been a solution to those issues, even when we've tried to do it. We've talked about the law enforcement assisted diversion program, HRAP, and all of those things, but we still have a variety of people who seem to be reluctant to go to those opportunities for a variety of reasons, some of them maybe legitimate. I will also tell you while I'm up here, our experience with large camps has not been good. I can, I'll remind you of some of the areas we've cleaned up in West Salem, Cascade Gateway Park, probably our most famous, if you will, is under the Marion Street Bridge, which did not turn out well. And I will remind you all of Occupy Salem and Occupy Portland and some of those issues... and some of those issues where designated, where, undesignated areas, but people decided they were going to camp. And I will tell you that, I would say, my knowledge of those is every single one of them turned out to be a disaster with criminal behavior and issues of public health and victimization of people that were living in those camps. So, unsupervised camping areas, I do not believe have a good track history of being successful. So, there would be, have to be a variety of things put into place where there's rules and supervision and some of those things, and I don't know whether the city has the capacity to do that.
Chief, do you have sort of a best, best practices for supervision of these kind of camping sites that you would just be able to share with us, saying, "Look, if you don't do this at a minimum, you're going to have, you're going to build yourself a problem on city-designated property"? Do you have that kind of information?
Mayor, I'm sorry to say, I don't. I'm not, I haven't studied the camps, because we don't have one in Salem. I, I, we could probably come up with best practices pretty easily about places that have tried, and if there are, I'm sure there are some successful somewhere.
Would a week be enough time to just give us at least an outline of what this might look like?
I think we could do that.
Could you? That'd be really helpful, I think. That's the kind of thing that counselors will be looking for. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. Part of the research that I did over the Thanksgiving weekend was looking at camping best practices, and I agree with the need to have supervision. The camp, the mitigation sites that were set up in Olympia, Washington, have a code of conduct, for example, and so people can't just come and go off the camp. Everyone has to sign that code of conduct, and they have their own camp council, and there are other, actually, I think I may be conflating. I looked at a lot of different camps over the weekend, but they are out there, and I'm more than happy to have that conversation with you offline. As I understand it, codes of conduct can be effective if the residents of the camp take ownership of it.
Yeah.
If they feel empowered and recognize the need for responsibility amongst themselves, it's more likely to succeed. Those are the examples that were studied. I think it was by the National Center on Homelessness, or, I'm sorry, I don't have all my notes in front of me right now, but I think we should look at best practices, because, yeah, we want people to be safe in these camps.
I, I think the other thing, Chief, that would be very helpful would be to give us some optimal numbers. You know, a camp of 30, or is it a camp of 100? You know, what, what is manageable? What, what has anyone else found that works? Right now, we are housing over 230 people in our HRAP program. Rather than having them in tents, that's who these people were, we've got them into housing. And I want to understand, how many can we house in these kinds of facilities? What sort of dent are we making that, that's manageable, if, if it can be done in a manageable way?
I'll see what we can do for you.
Would you?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? This is our chance to kind of flush this out next week, if you want to. Yes, Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. I think it would be important to, I don't exactly know how to describe it, but my research that I've done has shown that you need these public-private partnerships. So, while the city can designate places, we really need volunteers in the community to step up to actually do the enforcement of the camp rules, or the, whatever it is. And I think that's the piece that's really been missing in all the conversation. It's all been put onto the city to designate and staff and, and fund.
Yeah.
And we just don't have the resources to do that as a city government. We need those others, and I'm glad to see there are some folks here. I'm hoping that in the next couple of weeks, those people can get organized or start talking with each other about what they're planning to do, because I think there's a disconnect between our service provider community and the city, and I would love to see that disconnect closed, so that we can actually make this work and avoid what the chief is saying, where in the past, he's seen these camps become disastrous, where they can't actually work, because we do have those public-private partnerships in place. This won't be successful if that doesn't happen.
Okay. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, yeah, I'm not a big fan of the city running anything. Well, it's, it's not our main charter. It's like, yeah, let's take city staff and have them...
It's that short timer syndrome.
Demand a facility, and so it's not just a public-private...
Yeah.
With volunteers. It, we, we would need an organization, and I would like the City Attorney, if, if we can, to, what are our legal liabilities of having something be on city property in the event that someone is, you know, victimized? Do we have any liability? Because we allowed these two people to be next to each other, and one of them created a criminal offense against another one. I really, we need to understand that, because
Yeah.
we know how our general fund is looking already.
Yeah. Counselor Andrews, thank you.
We're kind of getting off talking to Chief Moore, which is probably good for the chief, but I appreciate all the work that you and your department has done, and, and I don't, I don't have any questions or concerns about your good intentions in all this, and thank you very much for that. I will also say, on the other hand, that what we've heard tonight and other nights was, what's going to happen if we just ban camping and there's no place to go? So, we have now said, okay, here's a place to go. And that, to me, makes it easier to say we're also banning camping citywide, except where we designate, because then people have a choice to either go to the place we designate, or not obey the law. And, and that's where, you know, I think this is, all of this is, is a horrible, messy situation, but we've got to try to thread the needle and, and work a compromise, and I think this is the best we can do in a series of difficult situations that were not really caused by the city of Salem. They're caused by what's going on in our nation.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Yeah, Counselor.
What I just heard, and tell me if I am incorrect, we're going to identify locations. This ordinance goes into effect in two weeks, and is it the intention of counselors at next week's meeting to identify a location and say, "You can go camp there now"?
I think there's a hope that there will be someplace.
And we will actually have private people ready to run such a facility, or we're going to have this stampede that, I'm not happy with not knowing what it's going to be.
Yep.
Right, okay. I know where my vote's going.
Okay. Just a second, Brady. We're going to vote real quick here, and then we want to hear from you, though, because I think what you're up to...
Well, second, your motion to add the staff report?
Yeah, we got your motion.
Okay, we're voting on...
On your motion.
Okay, fine.
You want to change it? You want to do it again?
I will remind you that, because I, my notes are already in the recycle bin.
What?
I, I moved that the staff come back with the report for the next meeting discussing all city-owned properties that may be used, designated as a camping spot, as in the amended motion that passed, with a brief discussion of the feasibilities of each space.
If I may?
Yeah.
Including the operational feasibility, or just the land use feasibility?
Both.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody okay? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
No.
Jackie, Jackie's an aye. What are you?
I'm an aye.
You're an aye?
Yeah.
Okay. One aye, Nanki. Okay. Motion passes.
Before Council adjourns, I think it would be helpful...
Have Brady tell us what he's up to?
To, to provide an update, because I don't want Council to be, I want Council to be informed about our city responsibilities under existing ordinances for certain locations, or at least one location, where there is camping occurring. Thank you, Brady.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. My name is Brady Rogers. I am your Neighborhood Enhancement Division Administrator. One of the things I'm responsible for in my division is the administration of the Salem Municipal Codes in terms of code enforcement. I am de facto the city's health officer, so answerable to my own conscience, standards of which are between my ears. I have the ability to declare a property unfit for habitation because of sanitation reasons, health, accumulation of garbage, junk, debris, that sorts of things. I've been visiting the camp at the Arches location. My first visit was on the 14th of November. I found the conditions at that time to be acceptable, and although it was a much smaller camp, things were, were all right. Following that, I visited the camp on the 22nd, which would be more than a week later. The camp had grown significantly, and so had the accumulation of garbage, litter, urine, feces, and the number of tents, just the sheer congestion in a location just inches away from the street. It's, I don't, it's not Salem's busiest street, but it's a very busy street. And with the larger tents moving in, the inability for vision clearance, triangles, and traffic, and the random crossing of the street mid-block, because some of the tents are now on the other side, the totality of the circumstances there reached the point where I, I thought there was evidence to declare the area a public nuisance.
Okay.
I visited the property again after that weekend, on the 25th of November, which was the very day of your last council meeting. And on that visit, I found that there was evidence to declare the area a public nuisance. I did not do so. I wanted to see how city council would turn out that evening. I have not been back there since. I don't know what conditions are like today. I can't imagine that they've improved greatly. I think the tent camp has grown even larger, and there's more of a dense, compact group of campers there even now. And I, I, I don't know what the answer is, other than I believe that there could be evidence for a public nuisance at that location. And I will say this, I've toured the camp several times, and I'd like to say that Salem police officers were there with me each time. And there were a number of things said tonight, but the interactions between the Salem police and the campers were both cordial and respectful.
Yeah.
And you guys did a great job when we were out there, so I have to say that.
Brady, what, what's your intention, then, at this point? Because this, our, our camping ban is not, I mean, certainly that is, is an area we're all well aware of, but the expectation, at least from my part, I don't know how other counselors feel, would be that you will be doing your job, and if, as health officer or code enforcement, you think that's a public nuisance, let's get her done.
Yeah. That's my intention.
Okay. When will you be doing that? Do you know yet?
Probably have a chance to visit the camp tomorrow or the next day at the latest.
Okay. And then what's, what kind, what comes next?
I'll have to imagineer that.
You have to what again?
I'll have to, I'll have to declare, get a declaration together and post the camp, if I have to.
And then what happens?
Well, I'll have a certain amount of time to vacate the property, 24, 48 hours, something like that, and then I'll return.
Have you had a chance to talk with the folks at Arches about your concern? I mean, where you could share with them, so they can share with, many of these folks are their clients, that they may, if alerted, to kind of a pretty dire consequence right now?
Yeah, not directly, but the conditions are evident there.
Yeah.
You know, through, Deputy Chief Skip Miller has a contact there that we've been sort of conversing with.
Okay. Do, do you think they're, Skip, do you think they understand that it, it's about to be declared a public nuisance by Brady?
Skip Miller, Salem Police. Mayor, I'm not positive, we haven't discussed that part of it. They're very well of the conditions of the surrounding area. They want to actually help do what they can to obviously help the people in need, the people that are camping there, but at the same time, help resolve the issue that's ongoing.
Do you think if, I, I'm just concerned that the folks would be notified that if there was a way for, somehow for this to police itself, or to kind of get itself cleaned up, maybe it wouldn't become a nuisance by next week?
I think, I think it's a very good point.
My kid and myself.
I think it's a very good point, Mayor. I think that if, if this, if this would have passed as was, and the emergency clause would have been, went into effect, we still would have been reaching out with everyone involved.
Right.
Before we ever would have got to the post.
Right.
So, if, if Mr. Rogers decides that's what he's going to do, and this is what we're going to do, then my, my intention would be to reach out to Arches.
Okay.
Let them know this is what's going on before.
Yeah, I assume that's how you'd do it, and I, I think even that it's, it's a, not, it's getting beyond pen, potential. It's pending, and I wonder if notification of kind of the status of this declaration might help be an impetus for people to kind of get a handle on this as quickly as they can, and maybe forestall it for a week or two.
Yes, sir, I agree. And with what we discussed tonight, I'll, I'll be reaching out then tomorrow.
Okay, would you? I appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just, I, I know that probably where this would end up, should it not resolve itself, is we'll end up clearing the camp, and there'll be a lot of debris and trash left over when people vacate.
Yeah.
So, what if we maybe offered them some dumpsters now?
Yeah.
For their self-clean-up, and with a potential to alleviate this and not get to where we have to declare it a public nuisance? How about if we, I mean, I would be in support of offering that up at city expense at this point. It's a, to get, maybe people would, could throw away their own trash, take care of the situation. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have to go down that road.
Well, I would kind of hope that maybe the manager, or Ryan, or someone could call one of the agencies that just got a rate increase, and ask them if they could bring out a dumpster to help these folks out, and give them a place to get rid of their stuff.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I, I think, but if not, take it out of the council's meal budget or something. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for Brady. Is garbage, we could clean up? Human waste. In the grass, on the concrete, urine, feces, that's not something you just clean up?
Sure, understood.
With a dumpster necessarily. How would we deal with that after the fact? Pressure washers?
Yeah, we use our...
Sterilants?
Sterilants, lime. There's a number of things that are used.
The current, under current ordinance, the responsibility for cleanup is the property owners. Now, I think in this situation, we would be, you know, reasonable with, with Arches on, on cleaning up the type of, of waste that you're referring to, Counselor, but under city ordinance, it is the responsibility of the abutting property owner.
Okay. I'm just thinking that if, if it's, if it's there now, it's hard to keep the camp in place, get rid of the normal garbage, and alleviate that hazard, which is one of the primary ones, probably, that, that's leading Mr. Rogers to, to look at declaring it a public nuisance, because that's not something you can decontaminate while it's still occupied.
One, one thing, Brady, could you keep us informed as a council, kind of what's going on? I mean, if you decide to make the declaration, what the timelines look like? Because it, it helps us, I think, at least know what's going on, or, or serve as a point of contact for us for information, or if...
We'll, we'll keep council updated.
Would you? I, I think that's important, because I hear what your problem is. I mean, if they're violating the code, that's your job, and that's not ours to interfere. But I, I think it's ours to understand, because there will be a public reaction, both positive and negative, and we need to be prepared to be able to explain what's going on over there.
We'll keep you informed.
One last item, and to, to inform council, because it may be moving fairly quickly, and that is, I've been informed that there are some trees that need, that were not saved by, by the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. There are some trees that do need to be removed for the police station project, and apparently there is some camping going on in that right of way, and we will have to ask those individuals to relocate for their own safety.
Yeah, that's, that's really understood, yeah. I would assume that's, I hope that's just routine. I mean, that isn't a...
The trees...
I mean, I had a couple of, you guys decide to take a couple of trees out on some property mine, just posted a couple of, a couple of little orange signs and cut her down, so I, I can't believe you can't talk to, you didn't even ask me to move my car.
These trees are on the other side of the street from Arches, and, and there are campers, there are tents literally right up against them.
Okay, but you can get them to move, right, I mean, can't you get people to move in a safety situation?
So we'll do our best.
If you've got the ordinances open tonight, this might be your last shot at this thing. God, okay, just seems like common sense at some point. Okay, anything else, we're adjourned.